And then if you're all set, Rob, I'll broadcast.
Let's go ahead.
And we're live.
Great. Okay. Can you hear me? Can everyone hear me? Andy, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome to the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals for the meeting scheduled for June 9th. Our start time is 7:00 PM, and what we're going to do is essentially run right through the agenda. And I'll turn it over to Andy Port, our Planning Director, to just go over mechanics of how the meeting will flow. And then I will get back to me for a roll call. We'll go through the business meeting, approval of the minutes, and then a quick snapshot from me of how the meetings flow, and then we'll go right into the public hearing, starting with matters on the agenda that are scheduled to be or have been requested to be continued to subsequent meetings. There will be three hearings this evening that are actually going forward, and we'll, after we go through the continuances, we'll jump right into the business of those three hearings. And Andy, why don't you, do you want to just do a quick overview again on the Zooms?
Sure. Thanks. Yeah, thank you. So my name is Andy Port. I'm the Director of Planning and Development. Because of the unusual nature of COVID-19 and the social distancing requirements, we're holding our public meetings via Zoom. So as you should see on the message on the screen, if you'd interested in speaking at public comment, or if you're an applicant, you can certainly raise your hand. And I believe the Chair will allow two minutes of comment per person during public comment. So there's always a way to let the board know if you'd like to speak. There are appropriate times for that. And if you have any other questions, you know, speak to those during your public comment period. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Andy. And again, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Rob Champetti. I'm the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. We're going to begin by, and normally we have our Board Secretary take the roll call, but because we're not in a physical hearing room, I'm just going to go ahead and read through our slate. And if we can ask members of the Board to just respond here, or I, or present, as I call your name. Ed Cameron, Vice Chair.
Here.
Mr. Mark Moore, member.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Delisle, member.
Here.
Ms. Rachel Webb, member.
Here.
Thank you, Rachel. And Mr. Ken Swanton, Associate Member. Ken, if you might want to unmute your mic bottom left, if, because we can, there you go. Ken, can you hear us? Okay, we'll come back to Ken. I see that he's here. He's having some technical difficulty. Walter Bud Shannon, Associate Member.
Here.
Okay, so those here, and we'll just circle back to just get an eye from Mr. Swanton, but we have a full Board, including two alternates. And so with that, we can proceed to the business meeting. There will be one application for which we will have to go into our alternates. And for that hearing, that's going to be the hearing on 30 Howard Street, just to jump ahead as part of the business meeting. Mr. Walter Bud Shannon will be our voting member for that one, because we have a member who was not present at the last hearing and just wasn't, didn't receive the recording of the meeting to qualify himself. So that's what we'll do on that hearing. So just to quickly introduce the Board, you've heard the roll call for those members that are listening. We have our members of the Board who you've just heard called the role. In addition to the members of the Board in attendance this evening, we also have our Planning Director, Mr. Andy Port, as well as Caitlin Sullivan, our City Planner. And our note taker this evening is Ms. Gretchen Joy. She is the taker, keeper, and publisher of the minutes, all of which is on the City of Newburyport's Zoning Board of Appeals website. So with that, we have before us in the business meeting, members of the Board, the approval of the minutes from 5:26. So I'll just simply put out to you, are there any members that wish to make any comment, any modifications or changes to the minutes in the absence of that? And we'll give it a moment. Pause. If we hear nothing, I'll ask for a motion to approve. Any comments or changes or notes on the minutes?
Mr. Karen, I had one change with respect to a typo. If you just bear with me for a second while I find the file. Oh, yeah, I have it. It was on... There was one reference to Mr. Swanton that wasn't Mr. Swanton. It was some other name, maybe Mr. Swenson or something like that. But I, maybe I closed out of the file, and I don't have, I can't seem to find it on my computer right now.
This is Andy. Do you happen to recall what application it was on?
I do not. Oh, no, that's not the right one. That's 5:12. No, I don't recall which application it was.
If you wish during the meeting, we could take up the minutes at the end of the meeting, and if you wanted to search for the portion that you're...
Sure. It's just a very small, I mean, probably not even worth the amount of time we've allocated to it.
Okay. Well, we can circle back, and certainly we'll make that correction. I'm sure that's, that's, nobody would object to that. Any other, and was there anything else, Mr. Delisle?
No, that was it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else, any other member of the ZBA wish to make a comment, note, modification, or change to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, it's Mark Moore. I just noticed one, again, small typo, but I'm not going to be much help. It's, it was the 12 Harrison case, first paragraph. About two sentences in the roof of the main structure would be raised, and an L would be constructed at its rear. EL, I don't know what the EL is.
I think that's the vernacular, just to kind of jump in, of a, you know, of a perpendicular addition to, you know, a kind of a
Got it.
prototypical, you know, New England traditional style structure, you know, they, it's, I don't know if it's correct in architectural terms. I've heard it often used. It's just simply a perpendicular, you know, extension off the, you know, the rearward plane of a house that looks like an L. It's just spelled out phonetically.
Got it.
I think that might be ELL. Yeah, yeah.
All right. So there we go. Thank you.
Sure. Any other comments, questions, changes, modifications to the minutes?
This is Stephen Delisle. I located the typo that I had noted before. It's on the 37 Reservation Terrace Matter. In the second paragraph, it says, Mr. Stanton, as opposed to Mr. Swanton. It might be the fourth to last sentence in the second paragraph.
Very good. So what you're saying is Mr. Swanton is adamant in that he's not going to change his name?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess we'll then, we'll go ahead and change the minutes. Okay, any other changes to the, to the minutes? Hearing nothing, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of 5:26, 2020?
Mr. Moore, so moved. Second.
Okay, motions made and seconded. I'll just do a quick roll, roll call. Who is the other second on the, on the motion?
Mr. Cameron.
Okay, so motions made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Cameron. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, Ken. We can hear you now.
Yeah, by the way, Mr. Delisle, thank you for bringing up the typo. It was under Reservation Terrace where my name was spelt wrong.
You're welcome.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Swanton?
I'm sorry. I just had technical difficulties. I just logged back in, so I'm...
Okay, so we are, we're in the midst of a roll call on the approval of the minutes of 5:26. Motion was made by Mr. Moore and seconded by, was it Mr. Delisle?
Mr. Cameron.
Mr. Cameron, thank you. And so we're, we've come to you in the roll call.
I approve them.
Excellent. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Champetti, I vote yes. The motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Thank you. Moving to the public hearings, we have several that have been requested by the applicant or their representative to continue. So we'll go with the very first one, which is a matter of 193 High Street, represented by Attorney Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman, and Costa. Attorney Mead, do you wish us to just proceed on your request, or do you wish to be heard in any way?
I don't need to be heard on any of these. You can just continue on with the requests at four.
Thank you. Okay.
Chair, this is Mr. Delisle. I'm going to need to recuse myself from this first matter.
Very good. Okay, so with Mr. Delisle's recusal on the matter, do we have a motion to continue to the meeting of 7:28?
So moved.
Seconded, Mr. Moore.
Okay, and motions made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Moore, and Mr., was it Mr. Delisle who's recused? Sorry about that.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
And Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. The motion carries, and the matter is continued. And by the way, we, we will always have five voting members. So I think what I will do is we'll just move through the members, the full members for votes, with the inclusion of Bud Shannon on the one matter for which we will be short a member on 30 Howard Street. So we had an extra, extra vote on that last one. The next matter, 468th Street, matter's been requested to be continued to the meeting of 6:23. And this is the matter Ryan McShara, Red Barn Architecture. Is there some, is there someone representing Red Barn? And if so, do you wish to be heard, or shall we just proceed with a motion to continue?
And I see no one in the audience who's to raise their hand.
Very good. Do we have a motion to continue the matter of 468th Street to 6:23?
So moved, Mr. Moore.
Second, Mr. Cameron.
Motion's made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Cameron. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The motion carries. The matter's continued to 6:23. The next matter is 3-5 School Street, the matter of Redco Construction, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman, and Costa. Do we have a motion to continue to 7:28?
So moved, Mr. Moore.
Second, Mr. Cameron.
Okay, and motions made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Cameron. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The motion carries. The matter's continued to 7:28. That brings us to our first public hearing, which is a continuation. And on the matter of 30 Howard Street. The application, just before we get started, I'm just going to do a quick snapshot of how the flow of this works. I see that there's, there's 13 members of the public in attendance, and I don't know who might not have attended a Zoom-style ZBA meeting in the past. But the way the flow of ZBA will work is I, we will begin every public hearing by reading both the applicant by naming the address, as well as the application and the request, whether it's a special permit, special permit for nonconformities or a variance, with the descriptor that's included in the public notice, at which point we will invite the applicant or the applicant's representatives, professionals, or others to speak and present. Feel free to say what you wish, but please give your name and address for, for our note taker, so that Ms. Joy can record that. After we hear from the applicant, we will go to questions from the Board, I'm sorry, we'll go to the public comment portion, where we will invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in support of the application. And if you're speaking in support or in opposition to the application, or you're not a supporter or opposition, you just wish to be heard, just feel free to pick a side, give your name, your address, and you'll be afforded the two minutes to speak your mind. When you do, I'll go and kind of just raise your hand on the Zoom tab at the bottom of your screen. Mr. Port will then unmute your mic, and you'll, you'll be live. After we ask for anyone who wishes to speak in support, we'll then go to anyone who wishes to speak in opposition. Same thing applies. If you're not sure, again, just pick a side. After we conclude that, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. We'll then go to questions from the Board. Questions from the Board is when members of the ZBA may ask questions of either the applicant, the applicant's professionals, representatives, attorneys, and such, or may adapt questions that were raised by members of the public and pose them to the appropriate party. After we have a full throw of questions from the members of the Board, we then close that portion of the hearing, and we go to deliberations. Deliberations is essentially when you, members of the public and applicants and others listening in, get to hear us think out loud. In the spirit of the open meeting law, you hear every bit of our, you know, of our toil with the issues, the facts, and questions, and we speak amongst ourselves in full sort of view and earshot, so that you can listen to how everything evolves after we have. And as a result of deliberations, additional questions might come up. If they do, members will pose those questions. But at the end of that section, we will close deliberations, at which point we invite a motion from a member under the Robert rules of order, even if the motion is not to be successful or is not successful, the motion's still made in the affirmative. So the framing of the motion doesn't suggest the sentiment or mind of the member making the motion. They will make the motion in the form of a motion to approve, which must be seconded, and then a roll call happens. That's essentially the snapshot of how ZBA works. With that, we are going to go to the first matter on the agenda that's live, which is the matter of Mike and Denise Traster, 30 Howard Street. The matter is 2020-039, a special permit for nonconformities to demolish a pre-existing nonconforming single family and reconstruct a new single family resulting in an upward extension of the front yard setback and adding 500 square feet of living area. May we hear from the applicant, Attorney Mead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And while Mr. Port brings up the presentation, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman, Costa on 30 Green Street, here on behalf of Denise and Mike Traster. And so the Trasters appeared with their architect, Chris Vance, at the last hearing. And they heard what the Board had to say. I think, you know, it's interesting. Mike and Denise want to make this place their home with their kids. Mike grew up here. His grandfather ran Traster Shoe Business in the 40s and 50s. His dad was Dr. Traster, who practiced here for 35 years. They got married after college and moved back here to Smith Street. Then they purchased a house at 325, 327 Merrimack Street, and they currently live next to Mike's parents. But they needed a little more space for their kids and a little more yard, and they wanted to be in the backyard of their parents. So they luckily found this house, which in its current condition is not ideal for their family. And so their goal is to make it to the same size for their family and to meet their needs. But they did hear, and they received the comments that the Board made at the last meeting regarding the house and as it compares to the rest of the neighborhood. And so they went back, they talked to me, they went back to Chris Vance, the architect, and they really worked on that, hoping to not lose sight of what their goals were originally for themselves. So this house is on a 9,743 square foot lot in the R2 District. So it's a little shy of the area, so it doesn't meet the area requirements. It's pre-existing for non, nonconforming for lot area and frontage. The current house was constructed in 1952. And it also is pre-existing nonconforming for front yard setback and one side yard setback. Interestingly enough, what the Trasters didn't know is that when they tear down the house and build a new house, the new house's front yard setback, even though it's still 21, 20.1 feet, will actually comply with the ordinance now because of the provision that allows for new principal structures to be built along the same line as the adjacent structures in the street. So the only nonconformity that will be left will actually be the frontage. Everything else will comply with the, with the ordinance, the side yard setbacks, the rear yard setbacks, the lot coverage, open space, building height, and parking will all comply with the ordinance. So what the, thank you, Andy. So what the Trasters did is they revised their proposal. They reduced the house. And Chris is going to go through how he did this. By about 193 square feet of living area, the footprint was reduced almost on foot on both ends, so it's kind of squeezed together. And then the initial plans called for a 56.5 rear yard setback, and now there's a 59.2 rear yard setback. So they shrunk it in that direction as well. And they've also reduced the height of the proposed residence. There was some confusion about what the height requirements were and how they were measured. So that was all straightened out, and the original proposed roof height was 27.8, and it's now down to 26.8. So maybe you can go to the next slide, Andy. This is the site plan that's been revised, and we'll go, I'll come back to this in a minute, because it has, thank you, it has the elevations of the surrounding homes on it for their peak and ridge, and we can talk about that in a minute. But here's a good, this is a good shot of how their front yard setback is the same as the front yard setback next door. So it actually complies with the ordinance now. So if you go to the next slide, then Chris can start to tell the Board how he actually kind of worked to squeeze the house a little bit.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. Yeah, as you can see here on the floor plans that Andy has pulled up, we reduced the width of the dwelling on each side by 10 inches. So we squeezed the kitchen, the office, the bathroom, and pantry on the left side, and then we squeezed the garage on the right side by 10 inches. So the width of the dwelling came in by 20 inches. We also squeezed the rear of the dwelling by 2, 2.3 feet. So we reduced the size of the sunroom, the open deck, and the kitchen on the rear, on the rear side. So essentially what that did is it reduced our, our lot coverage. It also reduced the living area of the entire dwelling. So we went from the previous proposed lot coverage from 25%, and we brought that down to 23.7%, which does include the shed that's on the property now. Andy, if you can go to the next sheet. Now, we also brought in the, the rear wall of the, of the second floor. So this squeezed down the bedroom one, bedroom three, and the master bedroom. So we took out living space as well along there. And when we brought the side in by 10 inches, we also reduced the bathroom and the laundry area. So we took out living space there, which brought us to a delta of 193 square feet. And if you want to jump to the elevations, thank you. We also brought down the ridge line, which brought down our mean roof height by a foot. And this was accomplished by reducing the pitch of the main roof as well as the dormers. We also reconfigured the scale of the first floor on the, on the front elevation. So it, it brought down and reduced sort of the mass, so that you had a smaller recessed porch and brought the entry door into the center of the dwelling. On the rear elevation, we continued to break down the scale using the horizontal elements of the sunroom and the covered walkway, as long, as well as covering the exposed basement foundation. So you can see there, we do have some windows and a slider down at the lower level. The Trasters will be spending a lot of time in the backyard, so we wanted to make that elevation as interesting and accommodating and beautiful for them, because they will be in that space. And Andy, if you want to jump to the next slide with the elevations. And as you can see, what I had brought up last time is that the site does drop significantly from Howard Street down to the rear of the site. It's about eight-foot drop, so you do have quite a bit of elevation change. So it does appear to have a larger mass as you drop down into the rear elevation. But from Howard Street, you do see a, you know, two-story cute dwelling that fits along with the existing houses on the street.
Thank you, Chris. So the criteria under 9B2A for the Board to determine is whether or not there will be a new addition to, of a nonconformity, and whether or not the proposed change will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming structure. So as we've noted, there won't be any addition of a new nonconformity, and there won't be any exacerbation of a nonconformity. The applicants are eliminating the nonconforming side yard setback. And as I noted earlier, now technically in compliance with the ordinance on a front yard setback. In addition, the only thing that is now nonconforming is the frontage, over which, of course, they have no control. So the question then becomes, is the proposed change substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure? And as I noted after hearing the Board's feedback, the Trasters have, have tried to address a number of the questions raised by the Board. Chris noted that the proposed lot coverage is now 23.7%, where the R2 District allows 25 and what it was before. But that would actually be 22.9 if you didn't include the shed. So there's a small shed back in the corner. And if, if you didn't include the shed, the lot coverage would be 22.9. So the house doesn't take up all 23.7% of the lot coverage. If, if you would, Andy, move it to the next slide and maybe blow it up just a little bit. So we did a comparison of every single house on Howard Street. We didn't pick and choose. We did every single house. So two more of the recently constructed homes on Howard Street have higher lot coverage percentages than what the applicant is proposing. 14 Howard Street was constructed in 2014, and it has lot coverage of 23.5%. And 16 Howard Street was constructed in 2015 and has a lot coverage of 24.3%. I'll add there, the average of the finished area in square footage is not on there. So I'm going to tell you what that average is. It's 1,908. We have the average of the floor area and lot coverage. So the, an important, I'm going to come back to this, Andy, if you could go to the next slide, I think it's important. One of the things that we did, and I had showed you this on the, on the site plan, is the Trasters hired their surveyor to go out and see what the roof peak elevations were for the surrounding homes, to see if they were in line with the rest of the surrounding homes. So if you do it on elevation point of view, you can see that the average elevation along the street is 126.19 for the roof peak, and the, and the proposed structure is 127.9. And the roof eve elevation average is 117, and the proposal's 118. So in the, in the peak elevations, you've got them as high as 132, 126, 138, 127. And similarly, in the roof eve elevations, they're all within the same range, 130, 121, and of course, down to 111, 104. So from a roof peak and roof eve elevation, really, the proposed structure is right in line with the rest of the neighborhood, and certainly not substantially more detrimental than the surrounding homes. So Andy, if you go back to the slide right before this. So from an overall size point of view, it's important to remember, as Chris pointed out, that the property slopes down dramatically in the back toward Merrimack Street, giving the rear elevation on the architectural plans an appearance of a larger structure than what actually is from Howard Street. So the bulk of the proposed residence to the rear is not visible from Howard Street. And so the front of the, and the size of the proposed structure is not unusual in the Howard Street area. As shown, and if I could go to the next slide to the rendering, the second to the last one there. Here's a rendering of this house from Howard Street as compared to the house next year. So there, there's, this house is not overbearing to Howard Street residences. The Board should consider the definitions of what substantially and detrimental actually mean. Substantially means to a great or significant extent. The term detrimental meaning tending to cause harm. As a result, it's not enough for the proposal to be different than that which is around it, but that it will be to a great or significant extent it will cause harm to the neighborhood as compared to the existing structure. Here, the FAR, the Proposed Residence, is .02 over the average in the neighborhood. And Andy, you could go back up to that slide where the comparisons are. The lot coverage is 5% over the average, and that's with the shed. Certainly not the largest in the neighborhood and within the dimensional requirements. It's a little over the average. It's certainly not the largest and not the smallest. The bulk of the house is about 700 square feet over the average, but in comparison to other homes on lots of similar size in the neighborhood, it will be the smallest. So the lot size is 9,735. So if you look at 60... So if you look at 16 Howard at 8,000, it's got 2,800 square feet. If you look at. There's an other size, 28,000, it's got 2,000 square feet. So it will, it is not unusual compared to the other houses with lots of similar size. And then the height is within a foot of the surrounding homes, certainly not to a great or significant extent. Or to an extent that it would cause harm to the rest of the neighborhood. For these reasons, and if you can go back to the. Sketch, Andy, that would be helpful. There you go, thank you. We believe that the proposed residence is certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And certainly it will not cause harm to a significant extent, if at all. In fact, Denise's and Mike's house meets all the dimensional requirements. They have control over, whereas the prior structure did not. And in addition, their neighborhoods, their neighbors agree. We've submitted nine letters of support from houses in the neighborhood or owners in the neighborhood supporting this project. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you Attorney Mead for that detail. What we will do now, let's just do a quick poll of the members in attendance. Or I should say the members of the audience, members of the public in attendance. Does anyone wish to speak in support of the application? And if so, please just indicate so by, by clicking the raise your hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And Andy Port will open your mic. Anyone wish to speak in support? Seeing no hands, anyone wish to speak in opposition? Equally seeing no hands, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and move to questions from. Did, did we miss someone who wished to speak?
I see none at the time, Chair.
Okay, I thought I saw, I thought I heard an indicator that had raised their hand. Okay, so again, having closed that portion of the public hearing. We will just poll the members of the ZVA on questions that they might have for either Attorney Mead or Mr. Vance.
Mr. Moore, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore, Mr. Cameron.
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron, Mr. Delisle.
I, I had a question on a point that I raised during the last, the last meeting. One concern that I brought up during the last meeting was Bjorkland case. Since this is a, a teardown and you're going to tear down the existing structure. And despite what was said during the presentation, you, you do have another non-conformity with respect to. The lot area. Doesn't that, doesn't this run afoul of, of what the Supreme Judicial Court talks about in Bjorkland? Attorney Mead, if you could just help me to, to become comfortable with this aspect of, of the proposed project.
Mr. Delisle, you're right, the, the lot area is the same, so it is lot area in frontage, I apologize for that. So it doesn't run afoul at all of Bjorkland, that's why we're here for a special permit. So in, in different communities in Massachusetts, you're allowed to entirely remove a, a non-conforming structure and rebuild it. In Newburyport, they allow the total removal and other communities, they require the retainage of one wall. That's not been the practice of the building department or the zoning code enforcement officer or this board in the city of Newburyport. So this fully complies with Bjorkland. Because it, it's, we're here for a special permit. And not required to get a variance because the pre-existing non-conformity continues.
Why is that the case? That you're not required to get a variance as opposed to a special permit when you're, when you're tearing down the structure? And then building a new structure on a, a lot that's non-conforming? It seems that Bjorkland may require that you get a variance, that's what, that's where my concern is.
No, so in fact, I think the case in Bjorkland, and I don't have it in front of me, but allows the community to make that determination. So where there's pre-exist under 48, section six, paragraph one, where you have a pre-existing non-conforming, single or two-family lot or structure. You may modify that in accordance with your local bylaw or ordinance, depending on how the community deals with it. So in this instance, some communities would say that if you're fully compliant with everything but lot frontage and lot area. You don't even need to go, need to go to the zoning board at all. In other communities like Newburyport, if you aren't compliant and you increase over 500 square feet, you have to come to the zoning board. Bjorkland does not require a variance, it relies on the local ordinance or bylaw. In the city of Newburyport, the practice has not been similar to Salisbury, for example, not been to require. A applicant to keep a wall or, you know, a, a corner of the house in order to retain the non-conformity. And that's up to the local board and/or zoning code enforcement officer.
I see, so, so then the, the special permit is the appropriate vehicle here for, for this, this project?
Yes, and indeed, because our zoning ordinance requires a special permit, that's, that's why we're here and that's fully consistent with Bjorkland. It depends on what the zoning ordinance says. If I go to Salisbury for this particular case, for example. I don't, well, I would probably because it gets taller, but there are some communities that if you come into, come into compliance with everything except for a lot area and frontage. You don't need a special permit at all. That's not true, of course, here and it's not true in a number of other communities. So you can do it with a special permit because that's what the ordinance requires, Bjorkland doesn't override that.
Okay, thank you for that, that's very instructive.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle, and thank you Attorney Mead. Questions continuing, Ms. Webb?
I have a question about the side yard setback, specifically where the deck was encroaching rather close to the side yard. And whether the side yard setback addresses the deck encroachment or is it just to the building?
So the 10, Ms. Webb, this is Lisa Mead, it meets 10, 10 feet all around. The 10.
From the corner of the back deck?
Yeah, that's 10 feet.
Okay, I can't really see it on my screen.
It's actually 10.8, if you're talking about the left side of the house as you look at it?
No, if you're standing at the front, looking at the front door, it's on the right side.
Okay, so that's also 10.
Yes, that circle.
Oh, the, oh, I see all the way at the back, that's 10, that's 6.8. So an uncovered deck is not, can be built into the setback.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving further along on questions. I believe on this one, we have Bud Channon as our voting alternate. Mr. Channon, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, I have no questions either, so we can close that portion of the public hearing and move to deliberations. And as just sort of a guide for, for the members of the ZVA in deliberating this, since it is a special permit for non-conformities. We're governed by 9B2A of the Newburyport zoning ordinance. The board must find that there will be no addition of new non-conformity in order to grant a special permit for non-conformities. And that the proposed alteration or addition will not create a new non-conformity. And the, and that's prong number one. Prong number two is that the board must also find that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming user structure. And when making that finding, we as a board must consider, or I'm sorry, we may consider factors such as size, scale, massing and volume as compared to the other structures in the neighborhood. And again, that's 9B2. So if, if members want to, just, I'll go through by name just to make it more efficient. And feel free to chime in with any deliberations and we can just kind of let it fluidly evolve that way. Mr. Cameron?
I'm not qualified on this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, apologies. Mr. Moore?
I was in support of it, I believe, as first iteration and in light of the changes to address some of the massing questions that were brought up by, by members of the board. You know, I can, by looking at the new plans and knowing there's new, not new non-conformities. That the massing has been addressed and the letters of support from the neighborhood. Are available, I can continue to support this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I remain concerned about the, the massing of the, the project, the, the size, scale, massing and volume of the project. However, I, I don't think that it rises to the level that would. That would require me to vote against this project at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle, Ms. Webb?
I have, I still have mixed response to this application. While Attorney Mead has presented all of the numbers as being complying with the ordinance. And the comparative statistics regarding the roof height and eaves in the neighborhood. For some reason, it just seems as though the house is larger than the numbers are, are showing visually. And I just, I can't really articulate it any better than that. I also think aesthetically, there's a lot of glass in the front, which is very. Non-typical of kind of New England homes. And I know that's not really part of our purview to discuss, you know, design materials and that kind of thing. It, it just looks sort of out of character to me, but that's just my own personal opinion, I guess. I, I still am not feeling as though I can support this, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Webb, and Mr. Channon?
I, like Mr. Moore, was in support of the previous design. I do appreciate the applicant making the changes after hearing the board's concerns about the massing, the size of the unit. But I, again, I don't feel that it rises to, to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I would, I would continue to support the, the application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Channon. And, you know, my sentiments are, I mean, certainly I'm sensitive. I, I'm inclined at first blush to, to align some of my thinking with, with Ms. Webb's thinking on the continuity of the building. But at the same time, you know, merely being different is not substantially more detrimental, it's, it's not substantially more detrimental. It's, it's that standard of to a great or significant extent, causing harm to the neighborhood, not merely different, but causing harm. I, I don't think it rises to that level either, so I too feel like I can fall in the, the support column as well. So with that, I will call the roll, I'm sorry, actually, I will listen, a motion to approve. Do we have a motion to approve the application?
This is Mr. Moore, I'll make a motion to approve special permit for non-conformities for 30 Howard Street, number 2020-039. Also with a special condition that the applicant shall install a new sidewalk along the frontage. In guidance with the city specifications and recommendations by DPS.
Thank you for, for reminding me, Mr. Moore, that's right, the DPS has made a recommendation on the sidewalk and tree ordinance for the installation of sidewalks. So thank you for making that condition, so we have a motion for Mr. Moore, do we have a second?
Seconded by Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle, motion is made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Delisle, I'll call the roll. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
This is Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
No.
Mr. Channon?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, yes, that's four in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the motion carries and the matter is approved. Thank you very much to, to everyone who's spoken.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, have a great evening. Moving to the next matter on the agenda, this is the matter of 3 Lewis Street. Thomas and Chris, let's see. Mel Granny, I, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that.
Malinari.
Thank you. And, and with a name like Champetti, I, I should be ashamed that I pronounced that out of, right out of the gate. Matter, and this is presented by care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa. Matters, matter 2020-042, a special permit for non-conformities. To remove a single-family residence and construct a new single-family residence. May we hear from the applicant, Attorney Mead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa, 30 Green Street. On behalf of the applicant, Tom and Chris Malinari, trustees of the TMM Realty Trust. And with me this evening is Eileen Graff, who is the architect on the project, and I believe the Malinari's are listening on as well. So this is a request for special permit for non-conformities. This board is pretty good about getting out and driving around the neighborhood of where you have applicants. And so I'm hoping you were out here at 3 Louise Street. The lot is a double lot on Plum Island, it's 9,800 square feet. But even with that, under the PIOD and the R3 zoning district, 1,200 square, 12,000 square feet, excuse me, are required. So it's pre-existing non-conforming for lot area. There's an existing two-bedroom, single-family home constructed in around 1960 on the property. It's also non-conforming for side yard setback as well as front yard setback and rear yard setback. The PIOD requires a minimum front side and rear setback of 20 feet. The front yard here is 11, the eastern side yard is 16.6, the rear side yard is 15.4. And this structure is one story. Interesting, the, the new home that's being constructed, not interesting, but good, will comply with all of those setback requirements. And the lot coverage will actually be reduced from 14.5% to 12.8%. And we'll talk about that in a little bit, so that's a good thing for Plum Island to have a reduction in lot coverage. There will be one additional bedroom added in accordance with the, those that are allowed on, in the PIOD. And it will go to two stories with a height of 28 feet. This is in the VE zone, or excuse me, the AE zone. The AE zone and therefore will be built up on pilings to be compliant with the storm surge and flood plain requirements. And it will comply with our lot area requirements, the FAR requirements as well. So if you want to blow that up a little bit, Andy, it's kind of, I'm not sure what you see, I see like a little view of this, so. So I just want to go over a couple of things on this sheet and I'm going to have Eileen go over the architectural drawings before we go into the criteria. But what's really important on this sheet is. The, if you look at the current structure, which is kind of the faded lines in the rear. Thank you. You will see that the proposed structure is actually just about the same size as the existing structure, it's just turned. And there are two sheds that are on the property that are also going to be removed. And so in addition to the fact that the existing footprint is 1,208 square feet as opposed to the new footprint of 1,260. So there's an increase of 52 square feet. We are going to be removing 240 square feet of additional footprint by the sheds. And so that's how you get the, the reduction in lot coverage. And so you can also see how this does not meet the setbacks, the current existing structure does not meet the setbacks. The interesting thing with this lot too, and this plan is a little busy because it's also a, it's also a conservation commission plan. So it's got underlying information on it. But there's a dip in the middle of the lot. And as you see Eileen's elevations, you're going to understand why the drive that comes off of northern. Old Point Road actually comes in and goes up a ramp to get into the garage. So Eileen, I'm going to turn it over to you with that.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, so starting with these floor plans, I'll help orient you with this. Because it's actually opposite from what you just looked at in the site plan. So the right side of this drawing would be Old Point Road. And the top of the drawing would be Louise to help you orient, okay? So looking at the bottom drawing, that's the, the first level, the lower level. And what I want to point out here is again, the garage will be accessed from Old Point. And what I want to point out here is, again, the garage will be accessed from Old Point. And thus the ramp that was to the right. And as Lisa mentioned, the rectangular footprint is similar to the existing. This one is 28 by 45. And a majority of it, or just over 50%, is the garage space. And then as you look to the left side of that first floor, floor plan, it's the beginnings of the living space. So we have one, it's going to be a three-bedroom, and this shows one bedroom on that first floor and a bath. And then as you travel up to the second floor, that one actually is the pile plan, so you could start to see what's underneath the building. And then there you go. Thank you. The second floor plan there shows two more bedrooms, the master and then a guest bedroom, as well as the living space. This second floor is within the roof volume, so there are dormer, it's a reduction in square footage from the first floor, because most of this space is underneath the eaves. So we've dormered to create a little bit more volume up there, but try, in an attempt to keep the building height as low as possible, there are some areas that are unusable. And then if you look to the left of the drawing, there's some outdoor space on the second floor level there, that roof deck, which then has a spiral to get up to an upper roof deck in order to get some views to Newburyport and the sunsets. Perfect. Thank you, Andy. So again, to orient you, these elevations are looking as if you're standing on Louise, looking at the house and the structure. So to the left, you could see the ramp heading up to the garage. Thank you. And you could see how the roof lines have been brought down with some shed dormers on the non-gable ends to bring in the light and the volume of space that are needed on that upper level. We've got a cupola centered in the building to draw in some light into the center. And then as well, on the right of the top drawing, you can see the covered porch, as well as the roof deck on the rear there, with the spiral up above that. If you look at the bottom drawing, this is the elevation that you will see from Old Point. Again, the two-car garage there, and then up above that would be the master. Sort of simple in form. Again, I consider it a story and a half. It is as low as we could get with, while still complying with the Wetlands Protection Act. So we're about, we couldn't be any closer to 2 and 1/2 feet from grade. Thus, with that dip, as Lisa was mentioning, we're upholding the requirements towards the rear where it starts to dip back up. So we've brought the building as low as possible to keep everything accessible for the cars, but as well to keep the structure down low. And then on the next elevation, similar, very similar in plan, an elevation where we've got the shed dormers on this side. You can also see the upper roof deck on the left side of that upper drawing. And then likewise, on the rear of the building, on that gable end of the bottom drawing, you can see the cover porch and the roof deck there. So minimal in its sort of simple shape of the sort of cape. You can also see the materials chosen, picking up on the coastal vernacular. We've got a combination of the shingles, the flares that you've often see on the shingle-style homes in the area, and some clavards. We've got some simple railing systems, too, to maximize the views for the Melarani's when they're there. And then, lastly, just to touch on again, the square footage of the building. So as Lisa was mentioning, while we meet the requirements for this double lot to be under the 25%, a fair amount of this space is the garage space. And that was a goal of the Melarani's to store their cars in a safe environment, not exposed to the weather. And so if you take away that square footage, which is 624 square feet, you end up with 1,824 square feet of living space. So while it's deceptive in its volume, there are actually, the quantity of square footage that they're living in is really very typical of the island at 1,800 square feet. You know, the bedrooms are not huge, the living space is not huge. It's really merely the fact that they're choosing to enclose their cars in this safe environment, and that's where the square footage ended up going. But maintaining the three, you know, going up to one bedroom, but maintaining the maximum of three bedrooms, we feel that this, as Lisa said, it's less of a footprint on the site. It meets the requirements by turning the building. And in fact, if we look at the site plan again, the structure that's actually to the west of it, and you could start to see the footprint, very similar in footprint as well, that structure right above. So as far as the scale in the neighborhood, and Lisa can talk more about that, it's really consistent to what is seen in that area. So that's all I have to add for the architecturals, but happy to answer any questions, but I'll give the lead back to Lisa.
Thank you, Eileen. So the two criteria for the Piad is that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood or the Piad, and that the change will not cause the structure to be within 10 feet of the side lot line, more than two stories or more than 35 feet. So if we take number two first, from a factual point of view, those things are all true. It certainly meets all the setback requirements, let alone to be within 10 feet. It's not more than two stories, and it's not more than 35 feet in height. So the next is whether or not the proposed change will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. That is, to a greater significant extent, tending to cause harm to the neighborhood. The applicant is proposing a structure that meets all the dimensional requirements, but for the lot area. Certainly, it meets the FAR requirements of the island, and as Eileen suggested, that the, actually, the living space is even smaller. But FAR includes everything that's enclosed. The total footprint on the lot will be smaller than the existing conditions on the lot. And the height of the proposed residence is certainly under the 35 feet. Further, the proposed residence is going to be constructed on piles, as opposed to the existing structure, which is on the ground. That contributes to the overall height. But also, it's an improvement over the existing structure relative to the Piad, because now it meets all the AE flood zone requirements, and is built on piles, and therefore more resilient than a structure that's built on the ground. The neighborhood, Andy, if you could go down to slide after Eileen's elevations, I think. So the neighborhood is a mixture of one-story homes, conventional two-story homes, and two-story homes constructed on piles. It truly is a mix. So if you go to the next slide, you can see, so the blue stars are, I think, those are the two-story. And then there are a story and a half, and then there are single stories. But the area is a mix of all of those kinds of homes. So two stories, the proposed residence is in keeping with the neighborhood. Two other residences on Louise Street are two stories, and the third is one and 3/4 story. A property on Martha Street that directly abuts the property is also two stories. And lastly, the existing structure needs some loving care, which is the reason the Malinari's bought it about a year and a half or two years ago, was to be able to have the property come into compliance with the construction standards on Plum Island and clean it up. So we believe that the proposed structure, given all of the comparisons to the existing structure and the structures around it, is certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, or to the Piad, and in fact, makes significant improvements towards the building construction and related matters in the Piad, and meets all of the Piad construction requirements. There are also, in addition, we have provided six letters of support. And those are from surrounding neighbors. And Andy, I can't remember what's on the last slide. That's kind of scary. Oh, so those are the neighborhood comparisons. So this is, we thought that this was also really important. So the average lot size in the area is 7,600. So we have a larger lot area, which I indicated earlier. The FAR average is .20. We're at .24. But as I noted, as Eileen noted earlier, the actual living space is much less than that. But again, we're not outside of the average by a great amount. There's a 3.8, a 2.6, a 3.8. So we're not the largest, certainly. And from a lot coverage point of view, we're actually less than the average. And again, that's helpful because of the existing situation that's being improved. But the average is 16.4, and we're at 12.8. So none of those numbers of what's being proposed versus the average, let alone the mix in the neighborhood, is substantially more detrimental than what exists there. So with that, we'll take any questions from the board.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead, and thank you, Eileen, for your presentation as well. Do we have anyone in attendance who wishes to speak in support of the application? If so, just indicate by raising your hand, and Andy Port will open your mic. Seeing no hands, anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? So seeing no hands, I'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board.
This is Mr. Cameron. I could ask a couple of basic questions. I've not been out to the site. Is the current structure somewhere, I read maybe in the assessor's report, 1,100 feet, square feet?
Yeah. Mr. Cameron, this is Lisa Mead, and Eileen, actually.
Yes, the existing footprint is 1,185.
Okay. In the building is, the main structure is still currently in existence?
Oh, yes.
Correct. Okay. And the two sheds, I think it's two, those are still there?
Yes.
Okay.
They're all on the ground.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Was that the extent of your question?
That's good for me for now.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions, the applicant, or?
This is Mr. Moore. I have a couple of questions, and apologies for having to ask one, because I know I should have it in front of me. I mean, I don't. Attorney Mead, could you mention briefly where the abutters were that were in support of this?
Oh, sure. So 2 Martha and 2 M Street. So 2 Martha is the one directly beside it.
Okay.
At 75-198 on that plan.
Okay.
2 M Street, which is directly across the street, 75-128. 3 M, which is 75-116, you'll see that on M Street. Then Old Point Road, 146, which is on, is 75207, the other one right across the street there. 3 Kate, which is where that blue star is, 75209.
Yeah.
9 Louise, which is out on, at the green star.
Okay.
So those are the letters that we have. And 7 Louise, the Malinari's live at.
Great, thank you. And then I just have a question. Maybe it'd be a better question for the architect on the makeup of the ramp.
Yes. So the ramp is actually designed with the intent to also be of approval with the Conservation Commission. It's a steel-grated material, so that water can go through it. Just at the beginning of it will be some wood planks that will start the ramp up, that four feet that you see. But other than that, that's a steel-grated ramp.
If I could add to that, it's my understanding, and he's not on this call, that originally there was a proposal to be a soil ramp, or of some sort of solid ramp leading up to it. And it was a recommendation that not be, that not occur, that there be allowed sand to go through, you know, the pilings, if you will, and then the grates to allow water to come through.
Thank you. And I don't want to brag, but I have been out to the site twice, so. But, you know, thank you very much. That's all I had.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Anyone else have any questions?
This is Mr. Delisle. I have a couple of questions. The first, also being on the topic of the ramp, and this may be a question that Ms. Graff could answer. When a car goes up the steel-grated ramp, does that create a lot of noise? Is this something that could be a noise issue, you know, relative to when cars drive over the bridge and you hear that? And I know that obviously the volume of traffic is going to be very, very low going in and out of the garage. But just as a, just a concern that I had when I noted on the plan that it was a steel ramp.
Absolutely. And I am not an expert on this, but my response would be that, given the very slow speeds in which you are going, you won't have that same rumble that you hear, say, going over the Bossy Gillis. It's also that these are stabilized and fixed with these piles. So I think, in my point of view, the vibration that happens on most bridges is due to due to the sort of nature that there's a good vibration going from the speed in which the cars are going. So I don't anticipate there is going to be that noise level that many associate with the steel ramps, graded ramps.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. And then the second question I had is, you're still waiting on approvals from the Conservation Commission? That's correct?
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb, any questions?
Do we need to make our decision contingent upon the Conservation Commission outcome? What's the sequence here?
Well, because the applicant has come to us at this point, you know, we're expected to attempt to try to render a decision. Certainly, it can be, and would be, contingent upon, you know, a final approval in the form of an order of conditions from conservation. But it's kind of six in one, half a dozen in the other. Applicants may choose to go to one board before another. In the end, you know, it's really an applicant's choice. So we just sort of, the applicant, as we find them.
Mr. Champetti, if I might, this is Lisa Mead. Thank you. So this doesn't always happen, because our Conservation Commission doesn't always insist on it. But the Wetlands Protection Act actually says that all applications to other boards should be made first. So the zoning board doesn't technically make their decision contingent upon the CONCON vote, because you have two different jurisdictions. But you can have a condition, which you often do, that says if the plan changes at all as a result of any other approvals, that we have to come back to the board.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Mead. Ms. Webb, was there, did you have additional questions on that line?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for members of the board?
I have one. This is Ken Swanton.
Oh, okay, Ken. My apologies. Please.
Yeah, I just wanted to check one thing. I have asked, been kind of looking hard at some of these Plum Island ones. But on this particular one, I just want to check if I understand this correctly. It seems that the building you're building is in compliance with all the setbacks, the FAR ratio, the height, even the frontage, the coverage, the open space. The only thing you're out of compliance with is you're less, a little smaller. you're out of compliance with is your lots, a little small at 9,800. Is that correct? That's the only area where, what you're proposing to be built would be out of compliance with the zoning?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, this is Mr. Cameron. So just curious about the additional bedroom, because we know on Plum Island that we don't want to put additional pressures on our water in sewer system. In the application cover letter, it is noted that section 21G, section, subsection two, number two, says that an additional bedroom, one additional bedroom can be created in a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming single, or two-family structure with one or two bedrooms subject to the applicable regulations set forth in subsections G3 and G4. And then G4, it describes special permit for non-conformities and basically says, you know, as long as this is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood or the piad. So a question for Attorney Mead, you know, in light of the fact that we don't want more people on there, obviously there'd be more people in a, in a bedroom, how, is this a little more detrimental to the piad? Is it substantially more detrimental to the piad? I think I know what your answer will be, but I just would be curious as to how you would argue that.
So I would say that it's not any more detrimental at all to the piad, and the reason is this. The piad was created, the, the details of the piad were created in order to fulfill the purpose requirement of the piad. And the reason the bedroom limitation is a maximum of three, and that you can increase to one or, by one, up to one, two, one or two or three, is because that's how the sewer system was sized when it was constructed. And it was very carefully done, both in Newbury and Newburyport, to make sure that no home could be over that number of bedrooms because they calculate usage based upon bedrooms, 110 gallons per bedroom per day. And that's how they sized it because of the Title V requirements. So one of the concerns was, was that if a person can develop their property under Title V, up to three bedrooms, because that's what you could decide, you could size it, then they should be able to do that same thing, and we should be able to build a sewer system that would accommodate that, hence the limitations in the ordinance of not more than three. So if you comply with the ordinance, then you've fulfilled the purpose of the piad by limiting the number of bedrooms in accordance with the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions from the board? Seeing no hands, we can close that portion of the public hearing and move to deliberations. And similar to the last application, this application before us is a special permit for non-conformities. So in our deliberation, we will need to, the board will need to find that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use or structure or the piad, since this is under the Plum Island Overlay District. We're making the finding, we may consider factors such as size, scale, massing, and volume as compared to other structures in the neighborhood. And so I'll ask members of the board to just guide your deliberations along the criteria for special permit. I'll move through the, I'll move through the slate of ZBA members just to sort of facilitate the deliberations segment. Ken, are you, you're voting on this one, correct? Ed, can you hear us?
You said Mr. Cameron, or, yes, I am voting on this one.
Okay, I'll start with you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna hold off and I'd like to hear what other members have to say.
Okay, Mr. Moore.
Sorry, the mute took a second to come off. Well, summertime, so we're back on the island and we're talking piad. I, in, of the last few cases, I've tended to look at it as, you know, it's, it's really hard for this board to, to be expected to do anything but, but look to make sure that everything's in compliance. I mean, you own the property, you're making changes, you pay attention to the ordinance, and don't, and meet all the requirements as far as setbacks in height, and I have a hard time, you know, with having a problem with it. So again, I've been out there twice, the property definitely needs some TLC, the home, the property in general. So I can't see how updating this with a new home, it meets far, total footprint smaller, has the support of all the surrounding neighbors, you know, cleans up the area and meets all the requirements of the piad. To repeat myself again, I can't see not supporting this, so that's where I am right now.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Mr. Moore on this. This board is, you know, we have an ordinance in front of us that we look at, and this, this project appears to, by all accounts, fit both the, the piad and section 20G, as well as section nine for non-conforming structures and lots. And the, the other issues are political issues as it relates to Plum Island, and, you know, as we've discussed in prior meetings, that if the city council sees fit to make changes to the ordinances regulating Plum Island, then that's the way that, that has to go, doesn't go through this board. So that being said, kind of a long way around the board, the barn, I can support this project as, you know, for the reasons stated by, by Mr. Moore earlier.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb.
I agree with my two colleagues, Mr. Moore and Mr. Delisle. I'm in support of this project.
Okay, I, I have to say I agree with, with my colleagues as well, and wouldn't have anything further to add on this one. Okay, so with that, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I think you need Mr. Cameron's input.
Oh, my apologies, I forgot to circle back to Mr. Cameron. Mr. Cameron, please. Ed, can you, can you hear us? It looked like, it looks like Ed may be logging off and then logging back on.
Yeah, I'll keep an eye on that, thank you, Chair.
Let's give it a, we'll give it a quick moment and see if he, if he reappears in the panel before we, before we call the roll, because I'd like, I'd like to call a full roll if we can.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, Chair, just wait a second if you want.
In the event, as just a fail-safe, in the event that we don't hear from Mr. Cameron, since Mr. Shannon is our voting alternate, may, I'm going to enlist Mr. Shannon's thoughts in deliberation before we close that section of the hearing.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I agree with the rest of the board, I can support this, this application as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shannon. We, do we see Mr. Cameron? I do not.
No, I guess, so this is Andy, I'm not sure, Chair, if it makes sense to either hold off, or if the applicant wants a continuance, or to try to vote without Ed returning, so.
Well, I mean, we have, we, we have an alternate that's designated as a voting alternate. We can, Mr. Shannon, Mr. Shannon has participated in deliberations, I'm comfortable moving forward, if we'll give it another moment and see if Mr. Cameron comes back on, otherwise I'm prepared to see if there's a vote, I mean, if there's a motion.
I mean, it looks like he's just joined us.
I'm back, yeah, I'm on my phone, I was, I'm on my phone now as opposed to my computer, so apologize for that.
No worries, sorry to mistakenly leapfrogged over you, so, so we're still in deliberations and, and everyone has spoken their mind on the, you know, on the board, and so we accept you.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm in favor of it, I like the reasoning and I, I will support it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cameron. Did someone just, just ask to be heard? Did I miss something? Okay, we will go ahead and close deliberations on that section of the hearing. Do we have a motion on the matter?
This is Mr. Moore, I'll make a motion to approve special permit for non-conformities for 3 Louise Street, number 2020-042.
Second, Mr. Cameron.
Okay, motion is made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Cameron. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, the motion carries and the matter is, the application is approved. Good luck and thank you all for your, your patience and your presentation and.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
My apologies, Mr. and Mrs. Molinari for mispronouncing your name and your, your street name and your name.
That's all right, it all worked out in the end.
I, I have no, I have no excuse, I have no explanation for myself. Okay, so moving to the last matter on our, our evening's docket, we have the matter of 20 Union Street, Windward Shaw LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman Acosta, this is a matter 2020-043, a special permit for non-conformities to construct additions to the side and rear of a single-family residence, covered porch and garage. May we hear from Attorney Mead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman Acosta, on behalf of the applicant, Windward Shaw LLC, and the owners, Kristen Eileen Forlalo. Windward Shaw is George Hazeltine, and it's kind of funny, we've been to both ends of the city and now we're back to the old, old part of the city with an old house. This is 20 Union Street, and with me also this evening is Scott Brown, who is the architect on the project. So this project is in the old Joppa District, 5,779 square foot lot, our two district DCOD. We're not removing more than 25% of the exterior walls, so the DCOD isn't triggered. And the one-story addition that we are removing was put on in 2011, so it doesn't trigger the historic commission review either. So the lot area requirement is 10,000 square feet, so it's pre-existing non-conforming for a lot area. And the frontage is 48.84 feet, where a minimum is 90 feet, so it also is pre-existing non-conforming. The structure is also pre-existing non-conforming for front and side setback. The front setback is 4.8 feet, where a minimum of 25 is required, and the minimum required side yard setback is 10 feet, and on the southern corner of the structure, it's actually at four feet, so those are our non-conformities. So the proposal's to remove a one-story addition, can you go to the site plan, Andy, please? If you could blow it up a little bit, just so we can see the, thank you. So currently, on the, as you face the house on the right side, on the northwestern side, there is a one-story addition in that same width, it's kind of narrow, so that's the 2, 1011 addition. So the proposal's to remove that and put a two-story addition there. Then there's a proposal to add a small addition on the rear, which is within the sideline, so it, it actually doesn't exacerbate the current non-conformity on that side corner there at four feet. And then the proposal's to remove the shed in the back and build a conforming garage, single-car garage, 10 by 20, which is more than six feet from both the rear and the side lot line. So with that, what I, what I'm going to do is turn it over to Scott because he can go over with you the proposed construction.
Well, thank you, Lisa, Scott Brown, the architect for the project. Andy, do we have the ability to pull up the Google Street View of this property?
Yeah, just give me one second, I'll pull that up for you.
Okay, well, I think it's important to sort of talk about what we're doing at, at 20 Union in, in the context of the neighborhood, and certainly in the context of what has happened to the property to the left of 20 Union and to the property to the right of 20 Union. So unfortunately, this, this image, the, the property to the left, which is actually 22 Union, has been recently updated and looks really much, much, much nicer than that, than is in that, the Street View here. But the property to the right of it, 18 Union, right there, if we can just drive right in front of that house there, Andy. So this pretty much looks like the house would look today. So this is an excellent example where all of the work done by the owners over the years has been very, very sensitive to the original architecture of the home. And this 2020 Google Street View, you know, the house doesn't look substantially different than it, you know, would have looked like in the mid 18th century. So 20 Union, 22 Union, 18 Union are all what I would classify as sort of working-class Georgians, they're all built probably at the same time, mid 18th century. I will note that the date listed for 20 Union, the assessor's data card has it listed as built in 1850. That is incorrect, I believe this more to be, you know, built more like somewhere in the 1750, 1780 range. So all three of these homes.
Scott, just as a, the district data card is 1750.
Oh, it is, I thought I saw it as listed as 1850, so.
That was the assessor's card, the assessor's card says 1850, but the district data sheet is correct.
Okay, yeah, so I believe that to be correct, 1750, not the assessor's, assessor's card. So, you know, all three of these houses were probably built by fishermen, and, and looking at the bones of 20 Union Street, it certainly looks like it was built by, you know, scrap parts, you know, found on the waterfront. So our approach with 20 Union is not going to be substantially different than this image of, of what we're looking at for 18 Union, 18 Union. We're taking a very sort of sympathetic, historically-minded approach to sort of the design and details of this house. Can you pull up our elevations, Andy? So while we're waiting for the proposed elevations to come up, you can actually see the front elevation in the upper left-hand corner here. And one of the things that we do not have, one of the things that we're proposing to do here is to replace the original window pattern, which would be, you know, five windows and a door, very, very similar to the house that we're, you know, that is immediately next door to us, so we're replacing the original, original window pattern. Other things that we're doing is, we're proposing, you know, wood clavering siding with a very narrow exposure. This is very, very typical of what would have been in the, in the mid 18th century. Our windows are a combination of nine over six, six over six on the second floor, again, kind of identical to the house immediately to the right of us, seven by nine glass. And again, this is, this is very, very common in, in the Georgian period, and is exactly, you know, like I said, what is on the house next door to us. Our, our front entry surround there is a period-appropriate design. This is actually something that we're coached from one of Newburyport's houses drawn by the Historic American Building Survey that was done in the 1930s. The chimney, we're taking down the chimney and, and rebuilding it, and we're going to be rebuilding with sort of a thin water stock struck restoration brick. As we, can we zoom out? And let's just, just take a look at the right side elevation. So as we start to go around the side of the house, you know, side of the house, we're, we're doing some things a little bit differently than on the front, front of the house, we're actually changing the cladding. Front of the house is going to be a painted wood. Front of the house is going to be a painted wood clavred. Sides and rear are going to be a cedar siding, which would have been a very typical treatment in the mid 18th century. Cedar was less expensive, so it's very, very common that they actually use it on the sides and rear of the house. So our addition there on the right side, we're actually checking some boxes in terms of what makes for a successful addition to kind of an older historic home, meaning that it is lower than the original box. It's also set back from the sides substantially. As you're facing the house from the front, on the right side, we're setting back that addition two feet, six inches, and the left side where butter is closer, it's set back a little bit farther, almost four feet. So in summary, I think this is going to be an excellent project. We're taking a very sensitive approach here. And I think at the end of the day, we're going to have a nice little family of homes here. 18 Union, 20 Union and 22 Union are all going to be this sort of nice family of homes that are going to be done in a very, very sensitive fashion. And I certainly hope that everybody else will agree. And with that, I'll hand it back to Attorney Mead.
Thank you, Scott. So the criteria for this area is under 9B2A and whether the addition will be a new nonconformity and whether the proposed changes will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or not. And as shown on the plans, there won't be any addition of a new nonconformity. In fact, we improve the, as we do the addition in the back, it actually steps away from the sideline. So we don't make that four feet any worse. It actually steps away to like 7.3 feet. So as shown on the site plan, the property can accommodate this addition without overcrowding the lot. The property is of similar size to other lots in the neighborhood. The addition will be constructed in a manner that will be complementary to the existing house and clearly subordinate to the original structure. Although, Scott, I don't know that the decision to take away the plastic shingles should be questioned. There, while the second-story addition being added over the existing one-story structure at the right of the house, it's away from Union Street and it's still of the same width. So it's again below the height of the existing structure. It doesn't overwhelm it and still have the same width of the existing addition on the side. The current living space for the property is 1,613 square feet. The proposed living space will be 2,094, which is an increase of 481 square feet. Again, not overwhelming. It's a modest increase for the size of a lot that exists. I think that it's interesting that Union Street, and hopefully you all have been down there, Union Street contains a great mixture of homes constructed in the 17, 18, 1900s. And Scott kind of talked about the ones built in the mid 1750s. At the starting point, thank you, Andy, starting at the intersection of Union and Marlboro, there's a cluster of homes that were around 1850. And as one travels down Union Street to the east past Woodwell, heading toward Flatiron Point, you'll see that there are few homes that are constructed in the 1750s, probably fishermen's homes, as Scott suggested. And then as you move close to Flatiron Point, interestingly, you get some mixture around Beacon, 1975, 1914, 1890. And there's a good mixture of homes, but this particular stretch is the 1750s. So the average living space of the, if you can go to the next slide, Andy. So the average living space of 21 single-family homes on Union Street, including the residents with frontage on both Union waters, 2,112 square feet. Our proposed is just over 2,000 square feet, so we're below the average. There are seven homes on Union Street with frontage on both water and Union that have living space of over 2,500 square feet. So there are some big homes in the area. Again, we're staying under the average. Similarly, other homes on Union Street include accessory structures to the rear, so the garage in the back is not unusual either. And that counts towards the lot coverage. And as you can see, our house, the property, 5,700 square feet, is a little bit bigger than the average, but there are some big lots as you move down Union Street. And the height, the lot coverage, excuse me, averages 25.4%. And we're at 24.8 with the proposed construction. So again, we're under the average. So in this instance, we believe that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And actually, the proposal fits right in with the rest of the neighborhood and will restore a 1750s house to be more like that, which it should. Thank you very much.
Okay, Attorney Mead, thank you very much. And Scott, thank you for your presentation as well. Anyone? Is there anything else to present, or should we move to polling the attendees for support and opposition?
That's all we have right now, sir.
Great, all right. Anyone wish to speak in support of the application? Just at the bottom of your Zoom screen, just please click, raise your hand, and Mr. Andy Port will open your mic. Anyone wish to speak in support? I see one hand.
We have Stephen Dodge.
Okay, your-
Stephen, if you would like.
Okay, I think I'm on now.
We can hear you.
My name's Stephen Dodge. I live at 22 Union. I wish Google would put a better picture of my house on there. But I just wanted to tell you that I'm in full support of this project. I like what Scott's done, was, you know, bringing the facade back to how it should look. I think the streetscape is going to look awesome when he's done there. He hit all the right points, you know. There's a couple of houses on each, you know, on each side that have been fixed up and it's going to look great. So, and I know the owners and George have been kind of communicating with me through this process, so I appreciate that. And again, I just wanted to raise my hand and voice my full support for this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dodge. Anyone else wish to speak in support of the application? Anyone else wish to raise their hand and speak in support of the application? Seeing no further hands, I will ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? I see a hand raised. Andy, if you could go ahead and open that mic?
We have Tom Colter John.
All right, Mr. Colter John, you are on. Tom, can you hear us?
Tom, you appear to be unmuted, but we're not hearing you. I'm not getting anything, Chair.
Okay, we'll put a pin in that for the moment. I see Mr. Colter John's hand is still raised. We'll see if he can sort through the technical difficulty and we'll poll anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition. And then we'll circle back to Mr. Colter John in the hopes that his mic is squared away. We can hear from him. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application? Let's see, I see no new hands. I do see Mr. Colter John's hand still raised. Mr. Colter John, do you hear us?
Yeah, I'm not getting anything either, Chair, sorry.
Tom, if you're, is his mic muted or unmuted? Can you tell?
He appears to be unmuted, but not speaking, or at least there's no audio coming through on his end.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Champetti, this is George Hazeltime from Winward Shaw. Is this appropriate that I can add a few comments on just the materials that I know that the homeowners are willing to commit to? And perhaps Mr. Colter John might have some, you know, comments on certain materials?
Well, I'll tell you what, George, if I can ask you to just pause for a moment, let me just poll the room, as it were, for a moment, and then I can circle back to you and certainly invite, you know, further detail, which may elicit additional, you know, comments or questions. But if I can ask you to just hold for a moment, then yes, I'll certainly, certainly-
Hello? Hello? Can anyone hear me?
We do, we read you loud and clear, sir. Can you, can-
Okay, terrific. This is Tom Colter John, co-president of Newburyport Preservation Trust. I think the project is a good project. I like the reconfiguration of the facade. I have no problem with the additions. What concerns me is that I thought the chimney was going to be preserved. And then unless I misunderstood, you're taking down the chimney. And that really concerns me, because the building to the left and the right of this building retains their wonderful early chimney. So that's my main concern on this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Colter John, and I'm glad you were able to, I'm glad we were able to hear you.
Thank you.
Are there anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application? Or does anyone wish to speak at all, whether in, not sure, opposition or support? Just wish to voice some thoughts, please feel free.
And I'm not seeing any of the audience, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Port. All right, circling back to Mr. Hazeltime. George, what did you wish to add?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment about the chimney. The existing chimney and the arch support is in extremely terrible condition. We are going to put back on the roof when we rebuild it. You know, masonry, as Scott mentioned, masonry material that will look exactly as it looks today. And Mr. Colter John, I believe, has seen my work before when doing the exact same thing in other places. And we, of course, have a very large commitment to the streetscape and error in which this house was originally built to ensure that, you know, that is something that when people walk by it, they will have, you know, they should not know that it's different from what it stands today. The siding will be of wood clad, the windows will be, you know, SDL of appropriate munt size. And the actual spacing of the siding or the exposure, we will use a similar exposure to the houses adjacent to the left and to the right, which I believe is three and a quarter, as confirmed by Mr. Dodge, as I spoke to him earlier today about that. So we are, you know, these little details, these things that I think are critical to other, Mr. Colter John and others' concern about homes of this age. We are very much focused and paying attention to those and making sure that we put a product out that when people walk by the city can be proud of.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hazeltime. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition or wish to speak at all? In support or opposition? Seeing no hands, we will close that portion of the public hearing and move to questions from the board. We'll begin with Mr. Cameron.
Yeah, if Mr. Hazelteam could explain just a little bit more about the chimney. Otherwise, I, you know, I like everything that's happening in the front and the side addition, I think, does enhance the view. And, you know, what's going in the back, I've got no, you know, concern about that size or visually. But yeah, so I'm looking at Google Maps at the current chimney, and I know what you're proposing seems a little wider. But just structurally, what's the, if you wanted to use, what's there for the chimney? Is it just, is structurally not possible? Or so what is the exact issue?
So the, you know, not to get into the interior design, but the intent of the design is to have a more open concept on the interior, notwithstanding the existing condition of the chimney as it stands today. It's, you know, it's dropped in certain places, which means it has failed internally. So even if, and I do believe that, you know, looking at the picture now, that's not, was once there when the house was originally built, we would look to put something up that is more consistent with what you'd see in a kind of a working-class Georgian home. And I'm certainly willing to participate with Mr. Colter John in the design effort of the chimney itself. We are going to use real masonry material on the exterior, flash it appropriately with lead flashing. So when you look at it, it looks exactly as if a real center chimney stands today.
And this is Scott Brown. I just want to add a couple of things. So I do not believe, I think this chimney was rebuilt at the roof level at one point in time.
It was.
And despite it not being rebuilt, it's in really poor shape. But when we redrew this chimney, we were really looking to the abutting property as a design guide. So, you know, what we've drawn pretty much matches what is on the abutting property at 18 Union.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for those answers. Add a further question. I know the, you know, the one-story addition's going on in the back and a covered porch. And also, there's a proposed garage. Are any trees being taken down? I know there's, at least from walking by there, and it's on Google Maps, there was a fairly large tree that kind of, you know, definitely much higher than the house towards the back of the lot. Is that staying there?
To my knowledge, there are no trees being taken down.
I think that is deep into the lot, if you-
Yeah, I think it is too. Yeah, okay, thank you. I'm all set.
And I just want to mention as well, Lisa, if you can mention that the sidewalk, we are-
Oh, right.
Replacing the sidewalk with Boston City Bricklayers and doing new granite curving as well.
Okay, was there any, anything further? Any, okay, so Mr. Cameron, was there anything further on your questions?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Great, moving along, Mr. Moore, any questions for me?
No further questions for me, no.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle?
Yeah, one follow-up question. So the, again, with regard to the chimney, the chimney at 18 Union Street seems that the wider portion faces toward the street, but at 22 Union Street, the narrower portion faces towards the street. And when you did the drawings, Mr. Brown, it was decided that the chimney that you would emulate in the drawings was the one at 18 Union Street?
Correct, yes, the property to the right.
Okay, and those are, and that chimney at 18 Union Street is is a, an example of that type of chimney for the period?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it looks historically correct.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Webb?
I have no questions.
Okay, and I have no questions either. So with that, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and move to deliberations. And again, as this is a special permit for nonconformities in guiding our deliberations, we, the board would need to make a determination under 9B2 that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the, than the pre-existing non-conforming use of structure. And that, bear with me a second. Sorry, and that the board must also find that there will be no addition of a new nonconformity in order for us to grant a special permit for nonconformities. So again, the same special permit, two-pronged approach, so we can use that to guide our deliberations. With that, I'll just go through the roll call for deliberations and we can just deal with it that way. Mr. Cameron?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm in favor of this proposal. I think it meets the criteria. I think it meets the criteria for a special permit, those two sections that you just mentioned, those two pieces. I think it's going to look great. I have a little hesitancy about the chimney, but I'll, I'll, I'll accept what the builder and architect and Attorney Mead are telling us about that. I appreciate Mr. Colterjohn's thoughts there, so I would be in support of it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I too am in support of this. I, you know, there's no, the addition is not going to create a new nonconformity, in fact improves one by coming in in the back. Again, the input on the historic nature and build of the chimney that's been discussed, I'm comfortable with the fact that everyone is sensitive for making it look period appropriate. The recasting of all the materials in the house actually have been very thoughtfully done and seem to fit the property and lot well. So I don't have any concerns about size, massing, scale, or issues. And I actually don't see anything detrimental, so I can support this.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle?
I would agree with my colleagues. I see no, no new nonconformity here and certainly nothing detrimental to the neighborhood at all. In fact, it looks like this will be an improvement over the existing condition of, of the structure. And, you know, I'd like to, to just voice one concern regarding the chimney, but I think that Mr. Hazelton's statement that he would be happy to, you know, discuss with Mr. Colterjohn, the chimney design is a, is a good, a good statement from him. And as a result, I think I can, I'd be happy to support this project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. And Ms. Webb?
I'm in support of this project. I think it's a, it's a great proposal, very historically sensitive, and there's no, you know, increasing any new nonconformity and certainly is not any more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. I, you know, I've got to say, I agree, and I also want to commend Mr. Hazelton. I know George's work and throughout the city and the use of insensitive historic properties such as this, the application of SDL simulated divided lights with, with, with attention to mutton size and separation, you know, with also attention to the collaborating reveal. These are just super subtle, but su, but very, very important sort of attention to historic architectural detail and sort of in the, I guess, in the absence of having a time machine going back in time and trying to, you know, cast a historic property such as this into like, you know, a ball of wax to preserve it. This is the best alternative to kind of pay tribute to that. So I, I got to say, nice work, and I look forward to seeing this in the same style and, you know, quality as I've seen other things. You know, it's, it's great to see that kind of attention to detail. So I certainly can support it for all the same reasons as my colleagues. Okay. Do we, having completed deliberations, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and move to a motion. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Moore, make a motion to approve special permit for nonconformities for 20 Union Street, number 2020-043. It was mentioned by the applicant that a brick walkway was going to go in, so I don't know if that has to be mentioned or if that's overkill as a condition.
No, no, not at all. It should be mentioned as a condition.
Okay, so with the condition that the applicant will install the brick walkway along the frontier of the property in accordance with city specifications.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by, by Ms. Webb. Mr. Cameron?
I approve, yes. Sorry, I didn't know if I was on mute or not.
Mr. Cameron votes yes. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The motion carries and the application is approved. Thank you very much and good luck. And thank you to all of those attendees that spoke during this application and this hearing. Having completed our-
Thank you.
You are, you're welcome and good luck to you. Having completed our docket for the, the agenda of June 9th, 2020, the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals business is concluded. I will ask a member of the ZBA, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'll make the motion to adjourn. Rachel Webb.
Seconded by Mr. Cameron.
Yeah, there you go.
The motion's made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Cameron. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's seven in the affirmative. The motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, members of the board and ladies and gentlemen in the attendance and applicants and Attorney Mead, Scott Brown, and anyone else who's still on. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Gretchen, thank you. Take care. Thank you. Thank you. And Gretchen, thank you. Take care.